I'm always ready.
Got the thing ready? At the college meeting in Timerville Town Council, June eighth, two thousand twenty-three, please stand and pledge a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody needs to come back, come by often for that. That was the best pledge we've had in a very long time. Okay, um, we'll go through the agenda. Everyone received a copy of their minutes from the last meeting? Are there any questions, amendments, changes that need to happen? And if not, we need a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve tonight?
Thank you, Sarah. Go on, second.
A second.
Any further discussion? Around the table, Isaac?
Yes.
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 Thank you very much. You also have a copy of the treasures report. Any questions for Melinda on any of their account balances, loan balances, and art fund account balances? Okay, we'll pass that. You also have a copy of the bills for payment. Are there any items, um, on the bills for payment that people would like an explanation on? I have one small question. On the very last one, waste management, is large trash pickup usually cost that much more?
No, and we're actually getting a discount.
Okay.
They had figured the hours wrong.
Okay.
And so it's gonna be, it was at least thirty-five hundred dollars because of all of that. Um, so it could be, they said it was a considerably large, uh, pickup this time.
Okay.
But it will be thirty-five hundred dollars off of that.
Okay.
Nine thousand.
It seemed, it seemed a little higher than normal.
That's why we checked into it, 'cause it struck us as odd.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Anyone, anyone else have other questions? Okay, I need another, oh, we don't need a motion, no, we do need a motion, yes. We have a motion for that, pay bills.
Make a motion and pay the bills.
Thank you, Sharon. Do I have a second?
Second.
Sarah, go around the room?
Yes.
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 Okay. Chief, inbound a police report.
Uh, pretty much everything that need to be, uh, sent out to the council is in the email. Don't really have anything else other than adoption and tracking.
You can update everybody on Luke's news and Coda's news about the dog.
Right.
Let everybody here know what's, what happened.
So, um, the canine that we have, canine Coda, was originally certified in, uh, only in, uh, drug detection and tracking. But we were able to, uh, work out a deal with the neighboring agency to get him certified as an apprehension patrol dog. Who is now certified to, uh, track and find a person or an item, uh, on one side. But now he's also certified to find a person who's a threat and apprehended by, like, if necessary. Uh, and we were able to do that in Falkir County, no cost to us, other than the time the officer and the dog were in the class, so. We didn't do that initially, it would have been a four thousand dollar certification, and we opted not to do that at the time. But the dog was doing so well, and, uh, instructors at, uh, Kuzuski's been working with us, suggested we could do it very easily. So we were able to do that. So the dog is, is fully certified and everything for a patrol dog. He's now, uh, bite certified, tracking, and drug detection.
And you want to take the adoption of the, I figure everyone's been around one time, you got it.
Well.
Although, maybe, maybe you're right.
Right. Um, this new, um, ordinance we adopt every year, basically what it does is it takes all of the, um, motor vehicle laws adopted by the state, and then codifies them into the town, so that the town is this Latin word that's in here, mutuatus montandus. Basically means, we're, we're making the necessary changes without changing the intent. So we're adopting all of that, but it's like, where it says highways, we mean streets, and that type of thing. And it gives us the ability to enforce those laws within the town.
Uh, when we enforce it under town code, uh, a significant portion of the traffic code that fines from that are returned to the locality instead of the state. If we write it only under state code without this adoption, then all fines and fees from it, other than the, uh, e-summons fee that we collect, everything would go to the state and not to the locality, so. Part, to simplify it, to some degree, we can write under town code, and the, the fines will come to us under certain traffic code. Not the entire code, but under, um, a lot of them.
Yeah, there's certain exceptions, but, and it doesn't deal with any felonies. These are all misdemeanors and citations. And then you can just write based to this code ordinance, then whatever else you need.
Counsel have any questions? So we need a motion to approve this.
Correct.
I'll motion to approve that.
Okay, guys, do you have a second?
A second.
Derek, go around the room.
Yes.
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 Okay, thank you, guys. And that's all you have, chief?
Yes, sir.
Okay, AC, pop it works. I think you have a few things for us tonight.
I do have a few. Um, I sent out a memo about the water leak asphalt repairs, and was wondering if counsel has a preference on which funding source to use that, uh, to pay the balance of that bill. I don't know that it really matters one way or the other, but does counsel have a preference, or do you want us to just figure out which one does come out of?
It's up to me to find you.
We can care of that, anything else, then that's fine.
Um, good job of getting it reduced by, was it nine thousand, then ten thousand?
Melinda and Chris worked on that, got that, uh, the initial bill reduced by nine thousand, and then the ten thousand that came in from the no fault part of the insurance. So that definitely helps bring it down to a more manageable, uh, location. Uh, we, uh, talked to the engineer today, and we, he sent over the easement flats for the Spar Mine Waterline project. And so I'm gonna review those tomorrow. He's gonna come down meet with me on Monday, and hopefully keep this thing moving along with the Spar Mine Waterline project. That's, if you recall, that's our big project on that list, and so Donna and I talked about that. We wanna get that taken care of, so we kind of had an idea of where, what's left over, so we can start hitting some of those other projects now. So, um, I'll be meeting with him on Monday. I also put in a memo about the McCauley Drive sidewalk project, and wanted to know if counsel had any, uh, opinions on that, as far as, we knew that there was gonna be an increase, we didn't know, and I don't know if I've even talked to Chris, Chris popped salt in the memo. But we knew there was gonna be an increase, but they didn't include the inflation, uh, figures in that, so the increase was more than what we anticipated. And they do have the ability within BDOT to transfer funds, instead of us going to have to go back through the entire application project with, uh, the application, so that, uh, which would delay the project overall. But to contact the BDOT said, he goes, I would recommend going ahead and just bumping that figure up to a hundred thousand, because he, we don't know what the, the bidder coming in at wants to do as up to bid. He said it's easier to do it that way, and then not have to use it, than to not have enough in there, and try to go back and find more money afterwards.
When you bump it by a hundred, it's only, ours went up by twenty.
Uh, it would, our, our portion would be twenty thousand dollars.
Okay. And that gets us the extra block.
The extra block, yeah, all the way to the community center.
Community center.
Yeah.
Or you can just not do it and stop a block away. Mm-hmm. The problem, the problem with that is, like, when we talked about this more sidewalk twenty years ago, it was a hundred thousand dollars to do it, it's probably gonna be half a million now. So the longer you wait, it's gonna cost more, but that's, I'll leave it up to counsel, what they wanna do.
I feel it's imperative that we do it, and it's only going to go up in cost, so.
Okay, absolutely would. Okay. Do we need, since it's spending money, do we need a motion to spend?
I would say we would, yeah, totally do that, and that way it's official for when BDOT asks if we're, um.
Sharon, would you mind making a motion?
I'd make that motion.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, around the room?
Yes.
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 Okay.
Thank you. And then Donna mentioned Memorial Park Drive. Um, I have started the transportation alternative grant pre-application for a sidewalk on there to get us on that schedule, 'cause we know how long McCauley took.
It doesn't lock us in anything.
It doesn't lock us in anything, um, but it does at least get us into that process, where they can start doing, do some work on their end, coming up with cost estimates and things like that. Um, there are some new funding sources out there that we're gonna be looking into, that I believe, I'm not sure if the, the Safe Streets for All is a hundred percent grant, or if that's also a matching grant. But through some of the, uh, bipartisan infrastructure law, there is, uh, there are new funds available that we're gonna try to, us and probably everybody else in the country's gonna try to take advantage of. But we're gonna try to get some of those, and see if we can't, uh, get some sidewalk put in, using some of those funding sources. The, let's see, I put in the memo about the bathroom project at the park, and so Chris and I talked about it kind of briefly, but we're gonna look at doing that. Town acting is the general contractor, and going out, we think we can do it. We're pretty sure we can do it in the budget that we had established to start with, and, um, that, we received, we only received two bids. Um, the lowest bid we received was two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars and some change. The higher bid was three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So, you know, we're pretty, I feel, I feel confident that we can get it done by doing that, being the G C for the project, that we can get it done for, definitely within our budget. And, uh, so we would be looking at savings, minimum savings of thirty-two thousand, potentially a hundred and thirty-two thousand or more, a hundred and thirty thousand or more, um, depending where we come at on those costs.
Um, there's just no way a bathroom of that size.
We weren't asking for gold fixtures or anything, stainless fixtures, but nothing gold.
It's probably half the size of the, of the pool building. There's no way it should cost what people are trying to charge, so. I bet y'all are gonna take that.
Yeah. Uh, received notice, um, Ms. Gretchen Hazard is here. Um, she's property owner of the property at the north end of the bridge across from the Liberty Station. And so, uh, Ms. Hazard contacted me last Thursday or Friday, uh, end of last week, and explained to me that, uh, there are certain things going on with their insurance, that they're requiring her to remove some of the buildings on her property to, uh, maintain that insurance. Uh, one of the buildings is the oldest structure in Timerville. And so I contacted the Herschberg Rockingham Historical Society, I contacted the town historian, trying to stick him with. I'm sure there's probably desire there for, for what we say.
Better than his dad.
Right, something like that, yeah, you know, um. But we're, I'm trying to get it out there. Uh, the historical society gave me some suggestions, as far as just trying to get publicity on it. Um, it is a tight deadline, I think first week or two of July is when we're looking at.
I actually am in conversation with, uh, another insurer, and as long as, and I, I think that we have a little bit longer in order to remedy the situation.
If we're planning to do something?
Yes, yes.
So, um.
So, so it's not as imminent as it was. They gave me thirty days, basically. Here's the notice of non-renewal, and here's when your insurance ends.
So, trying to come up, trying to brainstorm options, trying to work under a tight deadline, of trying to figure out how to save this building. In some fashion, it needs to be preserved, just because it is the, I mean, we're talking somewhere between, around seventeen fifty is what we expect. When they did the historic district designation, it was set, it was listed as seventeen fifty to seventeen eighty, right, same with the timeframe wise?
Yeah, all the older folks use, always use the date seventeen fifty. And when we set the historic district, uh, they give you a little leeway, so they're either seventeen fifty and seventeen eighty.
Just another thing for us to work on. So if anybody has any, uh, epiphanies on how we can, like, save this thing, please come forward and start brainstorming on that, drum up as much support, and we'll try to get something out to the press, to try to get some, hopefully, of serious on the recording, and get something, and if you would, Sharon, bring it up to the museum, and.
Definitely. I mean, if someone could dismantle it, we can store it at the museum. Until it could be re.
So preservation and spot, you know, is an option, relocation in full is an option, some, some way to, some way to save the thing. Um, it is a significant piece of Timerville history. It started off as a residence, well, historian can give you the entire history of it. Um, but it started off as a residence and for John Ziegler, right?
You're right.
And, uh, when he first came here, and then built his barn, and then built his house. So he, it was the, it was the, one of the first residences, but it is the oldest remaining structure in town, so. Just to get that out there, drum it up, try to get support for it, please, and we'll keep working on that one. Uh, the final thing I have on my list is, um, the dedication for the canoe kayak launch will be tomorrow morning at eleven A M. at the, at the launch site. So anybody that's available to make it, please come down, um, and again, thank Cardwell for their generous donation, and that allowed us to get that in. Um, and I, do you have one more thing that, and I'll put Cecilia on the spot here. Um, at the last meeting, at the last council meeting, it was brought up about a newsletter, or doing something online, and I forgot to ask Cecilia about it, but is our Facebook site open to public, where you don't even have to have a Facebook account to view it?
Yes, yeah, you can view our feed if you don't have an account. And then I did go and see the news, there's a news section on our website, where I can upload more, and you can actually send emails that way. You can sign up for alerts at the bottom of our website.
So, yeah, so that, it, it may not be a newsletter at this point, um, and we are talking about that, but, um, Mrs. Greg, were you the one that brought that?
Yes, I was.
Okay, so, um, so you, as long as you have internet capabilities, then you can get onto the town's site without having to have a Facebook account. So at least it's a, it's one step closer.
Yes.
Right, yeah. I now think I'm done.
Have you done?
I think so.
And Rob and myself, my grandson, are bringing our kayaks to the boat launch, but I think with the water, it might not be a very dramatic boat launch. We're gonna get five or six feet, then drag it the rest of the way. Until, until it rains, that's all we got.
Yeah.
So, so we'll be there, we'll be there tomorrow. Um, business and industry, any updates right now?
Uh, the only update I have, I've talked to the owner of the brick warehouse back here, um, behind Pop Shelf, and it doesn't sound like there's a whole lot of interest in anyone purchasing that property, so I have encouraged him, and I'm talking to some of the local contractors, uh, to see, his only, his only estimate for demolition of the brick building came from a Northern Virginia company, so we're gonna get, um, a local company coming to give us a look at it, and see what it would be, um. But we are, it, it does look like it's proceeding towards that. Um, also playing around with some different ideas of how to preserve the brick that's in that, because it does have some, uh, historical significance, but that, that follows along with that, too.
Can I say something about that? I did reach out to the, uh, real estate company, and say that the wording on the listing was incorrect, and gave them the appropriate wording. I don't know if they updated the listing or not, but to the extent it would have any impact, I just wanted to make sure it was clear.
Okay, thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
Okay, Parks and Rec. Anything you see for Parks and Rec? I saw a note from Chris today that he did a lot of cleaning up, sprucing up down the park, power washed, I think, everything, right, Chris?
Yes, sir.
Everything's power washed for our, for our ribbon cutting tomorrow, and we do have our brand new ribbon cutting scissors, which are very sharp, and I will be staying away from.
Very big.
Because they're very.
So you and I shouldn't touch them.
No. Yeah, if you, if you miss a finger, you stay away from the scissors. That's just the rules we use.
And we did have vandalism at the, um, sports complex, and so, uh, I know there, we tried to review some camera footage, but obviously the, the vandalism occurred inside the bathrooms, and they don't like people putting cameras in the bathrooms, so. Um, it would only be observation from who is going into the building.
Okay. Um, now we're down to finance. And it's the adoption of the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. And I know there's probably council folk who have some things to say. I wanna, I have a small list of things, I wanna address some of the questions. As most of the council probably know, I stay after, after council meetings, and A C and I kinda talk about what we can do different, after action report, or whatever we used to call a military kind of deal, what we can do different, what questions we need to find, what answers we need to get. So there were some, there were some good questions I asked at the last meet, last meeting, one being the newsletter. And you've already, you've already taken that off of here, so the newsletter is gonna be like, like we just discussed. Um, another question that was, came up was about the minutes. Um, our, this bit, this is recorded, so it's easy to get this minute, and then I go home sometimes, review them after, after I've already had it, to see, um, you know, some questions. But what we didn't realize is that for special meetings, we don't get those minutes approved till the day we come in for a meeting, and people don't have a chance to review those special me, special meetings. So Melinda's committed to getting them done prior to the meeting, which right after council meeting, she'll get it done within a week or two after. Now, if we have a special meeting a week prior, it's probably you aren't gonna see it a day or two early. But she's committed to getting them done earlier, and special meetings are usually much shorter. So, so people out there who wanna read them, can get them earlier and see them prior to the meeting, so that was a good catch by somebody. Um, some of the other items I just wanna address, and it's gonna go into things like taxes and so forth. Um, questions were made about taxes, that our taxes continue to go up, go up, go up, go up, that kind of thing. Well, I just wanna, I guess, everyone who knows me knows I'm a numbers guy. I can't spell with a darn, but I know numbers, and they just come to me, and I just know numbers. Um, I just want people to realize how financially frugal the town, the town has been. You know, A C and I, the numbers I gathered up are only since the year two thousand. And the property, assessed property rate on personal property was thirty cents in the year two thousand. Today, it's thirty cents. We have never raised our property tax, excuse me, our personal property tax rate. You pay more, because a car now costs a little bit more than the year two thousand. Then you go back to things like the real estate rate. Real estate tax rate in the year two thousand, seventeen cents. It's ten and a half cents now. We've effectively reduced our rate forty percent over the last twenty-three years, because whenever it come up, the council, this council here, or this, people who are sitting here, this council here, would look at it and say, we don't need the money, so we're gonna reduce the rate to just what we need. And, 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 you, you, the state holds you to that, 'cause if you go one percent over, not one percent on the rate, but one percent on the final amount, you have to have a public hearing. So we would lower it because we didn't need the money. Now, running the town break even might not, might not be the most financially frugal thing to do, it's probably a frugal thing to do. Responsible thing to do, but that's what we've done. So we have increased, 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 increased. We've actually lowered, you're paying more in real estate, 'cause your house in two thousand might have were a hundred and eighty thousand, now people are getting four hundred thousand, so that's why you're paying more, 'cause what you own costs more. And when you sell it, you make more. Um, and, and was that the right thing to do? Who knows? It was the right thing to do for the, for the citizens. For the town, it makes, it makes our pocketbooks a little tighter, but for the citizens, it's the right thing to do. Um, we talk about things like, when you really, when you sit, really sat down, and all this, all these numbers are on that, on that budget. All these numbers are in the budget, right here. We have a one point eight million dollar revenue for general fund, and that pays for the chief, pays for five officers, it pays for Melinda, uh, who else?
Cecilia, and Michelle.
And Michelle. It pays for ten people, and it covers just all those different things we have. It covers our loans, and that sort of thing. Add to one point eight million, the citizens themselves, who want to write that real estate, personal property, and, um, vehicle license fee are paying fifteen percent of that. Everything else gets paid by business license, it gets paid by bank franchise, meals tax. Honestly, the way we're running right now is our meals tax, if you take our meals tax and cigarette tax, there's people who come into town, buy a meal, pay meals tax, or come into town, buy cigarettes, pay cigarette tax, are literally paying ninety thousand more than the people in town. So, and if you add in the Walmarts and that, what they're paying, it's still forty thousand. That generates more tax revenue than what the people are asked to write out in check. So my opinion, that's just, it's all my opinion, but the numbers don't lie. Um, our, our tax rate's pretty, pretty reasonable, in my opinion. Now, another question came up about a five percent help for people over seventy. I don't know if we've got to the point we know we can legally do that or not. I think it would be nice to get, the examples given are people who are, they're solely on social security, and that's all they have, and they have, they don't have a pension to Leon, like I have, and, and, and that kind of thing, and they're only on social security. And if we can figure out a way that we can give the five percent, that would be nice to do, and I'd like counsel, you look into that, and counsel, see if that's possible to do. But I think that would be nice, and today, with, with what we're asking today, that would eliminate any, any increase at all in, um, water and sewer rates. You start to pay trash, 'cause trash is a pass-through, but if we can legally do that, I would hope, um, hope, I would hope there's no law that says you can't help people over seventy, but I don't know how that, how that all works. But even with that said, when you help the folks there, everybody else is subsidizing, but I think it's a very small amount, so it really, if we can do it, that'd be nice to do.
For water and sewer fees?
Just water and sewer fees.
Yeah.
And then the, the, the council as we go can cha, they can change it at times, they have to, they can change, you can change it as you go, and, and it, it basically ha, it forces the people who aren't on social security, not forces, it asks the people who are also, are not on social security to help subsidize it. But I think it's something we should look into if we can, if we can truly do it. And then we get into, one, one person asked if we have, if our employees have a salary cap. Now, every year, A C hands out to the folks on the council, a list of, here's what a town manager makes in all the towns, here's what everyone makes in all the towns. And, and we do not have a salary cap, and when I tell you where we stand against other towns, you'll know why we don't have a salary cap. And I'll go through this, and our town manager, now we're looking at six towns, I think we didn't include, no, Crawford, they're, they're a little different structure. Smaller town, they work with Bridgewater a lot, that kind of thing. But so we're looking at six towns. Out of the six towns, our town manager ranks six out of six, one being the highest paid, six being the lowest paid. Treasurer ranks six out of six. Now, A C ranks six out of six, and he does tre, he does town manager, and he does, um, zoning administrator. Melinda does clerk and treasurer, correct? She holds two, and other towns have both those jobs. Assistant treasurer, two out of six. Our clerk is five out of six. Our police chief is three out of six. And you're one of the most senior police chiefs, so you are the senior one, okay.
Five, four.
Sergeant, four out of six. Our average officer salary, four out of six. The maiden supervisor, two out of four, and we had to do four because there's many people do Chris's job. Chris does the job of many folks. Chris does the job of many folks. Head water operator, three out of four. Skill labor, five out of five. And semi-skilled, three out of four. So that's why we don't have a cap. Like in every business, you have to go out there and look at the, what your competition's paying, you can give people a great environment to work, but you have to keep salaries competitive. Mo, money's not, not always it. You give them a great place to work, you give them a fair, you give them a fair job and you feed them fairly, you treat them fairly, and things go good. And, you know, I think the big, the big discussion was the amount of raise to give to folks. There was, there was discussion of five, discussion of eight, discussion of ten. The budget right now is prepared with ten. You know, when we look at a ten percent increase, we, we were talking about fixed income people, people in social security. Well, social security got eight point seven percent cost of living increase. Those are people as some fixed, the fixed income thing has been debated for forever. But if they get eight point, that eight point seven is extra money for them to pay the bills that increase due to inflation. So if people in social security deserve eight point seven, why would we think that people are working to pay their social security to deserve a five percent when the cost of living is, is eight point seven percent? And, you know, we're looking at folks who, I'll just use Chris's group, they, they redid the police department, they did the sports complex, they did the shelter roofing, they did the shelter concrete, they did the walking paths, maybe all, they've saved two hundred fifty thousand over the last couple of years. And we're, and we're having this debate over roughly fifty thousand dollars. And, and on the bathrooms, they're going to save more than this pay raise on the bathrooms we're currently working on. And we also, because we always want to make sure we're doing the right thing, we looked at a neighbor in town, I won't mention the name, but a neighbor in town, they're getting eight percent raise. I went back and we looked at Rockingham County, they sent us their list of, of their salaries. The general pay in Rockingham County, they're starting out at the five percent cost of living. And then they're getting a half percent for every year served, and it looks, it appears in their current position. So, so you see things from a five percent for a person who's been in one year to as much as a six, uh, six, excuse me, seven point, excuse me, nineteen percent, I forget the numbers. So their average is about seven point three percent. When you look at the fire and rescue, they're the same way, and they're averaging everything from five percent to sixteen percent, averaging eight point three. So when everyone else is getting eight, eight point three percent, us asking for ten, we're on the bottom of the pay bracket, isn't unreasonable. Now, is it tough to do? Yes, it is. It is tough to do, it, it, but if we can do it, we need to do it. So, and, and, and to do this, what we're asking is you're going to pay two dollars and forty cents a month for water and sewer and trash. Trash just passed through, it's really a dollar sixty-five. You're, you're changing the meals tax to one percent more, and we're not subsidizing people with two trash bags. That's all we're doing. That's all we're doing. We're asking people to, to absorb two dollars and forty cents more. And when you look at the average cost of social security, average people's social security make eighteen hundred dollars if you Google it. I don't have social security yet, forget it, because I don't know, but it's, and you guys know if that's even true. But if they make eighteen hundred dollars, eight, eight, eight point seven percent is a hundred and fifty-eight dollars more a month than social security people are getting. We're asking for two dollars and forty cents, that's a hundred and fifty-eight bucks. If you had a hundred and fifty-eight bucks and lost three bucks, you won't even miss it. So that's what we're asking for. So I just wanted to get that out there, because I think it's a learning curve for everybody who, who, who doesn't live in numbers like I do. But if, if we can pass this budget and give these people, people ten percent raise that they deserve. Now, the thing is though, down the road, you know, next year, there might not be the money if, you know, it may be a two percent raise, it may be a three percent raise, who knows, but that's next year. This year, we can do it with those little changes. And I would like to see us do it as we can. I think that's all I got to say. I spoke a lot, if I didn't confuse people a lot of numbers. But I'd like to go around the room and see if anyone else wants to say something.
I do. First of all, with social security, eight point seven, you're not taking into consideration what some of these elderly people are paying for prescription drugs.
No, I'm not, I'm, I'm not taking any of that into account.
Exactly. And Medicare went up.
I'm taking into account that they got eight point seven cost of living because everything else went up by cost.
Roosevelt did that, thank you.
But, but I'm saying all we're asking for is two point, two dollars and forty cents.
Well, and I remember the day when I was in school, you know, a comment was made last month about, well, it's only a couple of dollars. I remember when I was in school in Winchester, I didn't even have a dollar in my pocket. And the one, first of all, our employees are invaluable to me.
Exactly.
I wish that we could increase everyone's pay double. Because anything that I ever ask anyone to do, they are so willing to do it for, for me.
Agreed.
But last month, the citizens that came out and talked, first of all, I appreciate them coming out. I was elected by the citizens of Timerville. I am representing the citizens of Timerville. I have gotten numerous phone calls stating I have never gotten a ten percent raise. The lady from Riverside Drive, Emma Straderman, she said that her friend committed suicide down at the park because she had been evicted from her home. She was living in an apartment, she had no money. So when you say it's only a couple of dollars to these people that's paying six, seven hundred dollars a month for prescriptions, they go to Walmart, they can't buy food because it has doubled, they go to the gas station and it's a dollar and fifty cents more than it was two years ago, a couple of dollars is very much to them.
Okay.
Now, that's the way I feel about it. I want them to have a raise, definitely, but I cannot justify, because of the phone calls I've received, the citizens that came out last month and talked, I can't give a ten percent raise.
Okay. Isaac?
The only thing that I would flag as also to anybody going through tough times that they're going to have, I don't feel two dollars and forty cents a month is going to change the outcome of anybody in that situation, first off. Second off, for, the other, I think we're on a good track to trying to come up with either a, a tax break or an exemption form or something for people in that situation. Thirdly, I would say, being younger generation, obviously, I think times are definitely changing. The value of a dollar is not anywhere near what it used to be. And I think that our employees are very valuable to the town and all the money that they save from the projects that's, that's been done across the board. And I think if we can keep the employees that we have, I think each year they will more than save their, this, this raise and still be in the lower half of income compared to other towns. I'm, I'm scared because the employees that we have now, money, money's not everything, but I'm scared to lose any employee at all because of money, because of being, you know, no, nobody wants to work the job of two people and be in the last pay of all our surrounding towns. Ten percent's a lot, it, it's more than most people are used to, but I would say people aren't used to being in the last pay bracket and, you know, falling dead last and, and everybody. So I think for the things we've straightened out with taxes, the ten percent raise, I think one hundred percent needs to happen. I'm, I'm, I'm very confident in this. I think it's, it's a little bit of a, a, at the end of the day, a ten percent raise isn't, isn't a huge amount of money at the end of the year, but I, I think that it's appreciation that, that as, you know, I, I'm on here, I was elected by the residents also. The residents aren't, will be happy if they don't have police, police department, maintenance I, I think that it's something that we need to do for our employees, just as a little bit of appreciation, a little bit of job, job security, kind of, you know, say, hey, we appreciate you, kind of, I would have to say.
What I've heard numerous times is that, you know, I've never heard of a pay increase of ten percent. The most I ever got was three, or the most I ever got was five. And I understand that. But at the same time, we've never seen inflation like this. The cost of living hasn't increased like it has in the past year in recent history. So everything is going to cost more at the end of the day, including having a well-staffed town. And compensating our employees for a job well done, I feel like is an investment in our town. It is a bigger capital improvement as what we've done in the parks, in my opinion. So ten percent, absolutely.
Good.
I brought up these concerns during our budget meeting. My thoughts were employee salaries, yes, employees do deserve raises, absolutely.
Do deserve raises.
I was hoping to try and negotiate some of that during the budget meetings, but there really wasn't any, any compromising on it. But my thoughts were, you know, right now, we are using ARPA money to fund a lot of our projects, a lot of things that are happening. Even tonight, the increase in, in one of our bills has gone up, you know, can we just pay that out of the ARPA funds? Well, that ARPA money will no longer be there at some point, and then our town has to make up that difference with whatever revenue that we can generate. And I feel at this point, our town does not generate enough revenue to sustain this increase, a ten percent increase, and then be able to continue for the future. I know you're talking about this is just for this budget year, but the decision we make tonight is not just for this year. This decision tonight goes into our future, it will affect our budget, budget next year and more into the future, right? Because we have to be able to sustain that amount that we are paying our employees and then hopefully offer them more in the future because the cost of everything will continue to go up. So if we give them ten percent this year, but next year we just really don't have the money, and I'm sorry, we, we can't keep going anyways, I don't feel like that's appropriate or justified for, you know, good for our employees either. So my thoughts are just the, the lack of the revenue that is coming into our town and we're counting on increasing the meals tax. We have very few restaurants. I know it's all prepared food, and I know that that does generate some revenue, but I, I feel like, and in a given point in time, that revenue can decrease, and then we won't have that money. So my thought is just the future of what's going to happen and being able to sustain and continue to pay for that.
Claire, can you, you have a say, do you, don't you?
With everything that's been said, I've had two people approach me, only two, within the last two months, wanting to know why I'm in favor of raising taxes. I said, what are you talking about? Well, my real estate and personal property taxes are going up. I said, no, they're not. The only taxes that's going up is meals tax, which is one percent, and the water bill, which I explained to them what has happened in the past, of not going up on the water bill. And then all of a sudden, something happens, we have to go up dramatically, that's a big increase. I am against going up in taxes, that's why I did not want to raise personal property or real estate taxes, and I even suggested going up one percent on meals tax. That's ten cents on a ten dollar meal. If you take your family out and it's a fifty dollar, you're looking at fifty cents. It's not a whole lot of money. I think each year we have to go up on water and sewer so we don't get behind and then have to have a major, major increase. But I found it to be really disturbing that the people that I spoke to got information wrong. So where are they getting that information from? Has to be other council members. So I, when I talk to someone, I don't go in with a, I'm for this or I'm against it. I listen to their concern and I give them the facts. I don't give them my personal opinion upfront. I let them know this is what's going on. They understood, then they were in agreement with it. As far as the raises, our employees, as you were mentioning earlier, are the lowest paid employees majority. We also have the highest number of residents per employee than any other town in Rockingham County. So there's two ways to fix that. One, we hire more employees to take the load off the employees that we already have, but what's going to happen? We need revenue for that, so stuff's going to have to increase. I think all of our employees do an amazing job. They are very underpaid for what they do. You know, our maintenance does, it doesn't matter if there's a, a water leak, they're out there in the middle of the night, below freezing, temperatures, hundred degree weather, they're out there working to keep the services up. They're saving us money by doing these projects instead of contracting them out. So I think that we take them for granted sometimes. It's, you know, we can hire more employees to help take the workload off them, which is going to cost even more money because you're going to have double the salaries. We're not talking about a whole lot of money with those increases. And with the water and sewer, I know there's programs out there that people can get to help pay their utility bills that are struggling. It's just a little research that they need to do and some applications to fill out to get that assistance.
Thank you. Are you getting that?
You know, I'm not sure it's a good comparison to compare eight point seven percent to people in social security that's making a couple thousand dollars compared to a ten percent increase in somebody that's making seventy thousand dollars. That, you know, that, that doesn't chat out to me. The five percent on the water and sewer, with the remaining balance at the end of this budget year, you know, I think three percent's more will cost for. And the ten percent, don't get it wrong, employees do a hell of a bang-up job, there's no doubt. They probably deserve it, but at the same time, you know, I have to think about the money of the people that are working.
Okay, so everyone's got their opinion out there, everyone's said how they feel. Now we need to vote on the proposed budget. The proposed budget is for a one percent increase in meal tax, a five percent increase in water and sewer, and raising the cost of having additional trash cans and no longer subsidizing two trash can users. And as we talked about, includes a ten percent increase for our employees. So I guess we'll get a motion, we'll see where it goes, and we'll go from there. Do I have a motion?
I'm motion to approve the twenty-three budget.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? I think we discussed it pretty good so far. All those in favor? Ray, oh, we've got to do a roll call, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes.
No.
And then I'm the tiebreaker, so I say yes. So, budget passes. Okay, personnel, anything on personnel?
Yes, sir.
Thanks to all the employees. Playing City Memorial Museum, you guys want to share?
Um, yes. In July, the exhibit is going up. It's the twenty-fifth anniversary of the museum. And in April, we had thirty-three volunteer hours. In May, seventy-seven volunteer hours. Guest in April was ninety-one, and in May, one hundred and twenty-three.
Awesome.
Yeah, he needs, yeah, because he did last month.
I'm just, I'm just picking one here, come on up. I'm just, I'm just picking one here, come on up.
On April 3rd, 1930, hard freezes several nights the previous week were estimated to have cut the Timberville area peach crop by two-thirds. April 7th, 1930, Timberville hometown administrators put on a show at the New Market Town Hall. April, 1949, Edford Will, that's Eddie Will, that's everybody doing. Principal of the Timberville High and Grade School was elected president of the Virginia High School League. April, 1909, wheat was bringing a dollar forty a bushel, this was the highest price in eight years. Friday, April 28th, 1922, on this night, a five-reel comedy was playing at the Columbia Theater in Timberville. Did you know your church had a Pollyanna Sunday School class?
I don't even know what that is. So, so I do not know.
This was a little bit before your time, you probably don't remember this, it was 1925.
I was, I was pretty young.
Then February 20th, 1925, the annual social of the Pollyanna, that's a girl's Sunday School class.
Okay.
Of the Reformed Church was held at the school auditorium. About 100 people were present. Many games and contests were held. Admission fee was five cents for each foot and height, plus a penny for each additional inch.
Say that again?
That's a pretty good way to charge, especially if you're short.
So say what it was again?
Uh, the admission fee was five cents for each foot and height.
Okay.
Plus a penny for each additional inch. So you better all be in short that night. February, 1948, you see the progress in Timberville when the streetlights were turned on for the first time. And that's all I have on my paper.
That's all you got for that?
But we need to save the John Ziegler House.
Okay.
Don't wait.
Yes, it would be nice.
Yeah, John Ziegler, John Ziegler moved to Timberville in uh, 1814. And uh, that's, that's the house that he moved into, you know all about that.
I do.
And he actually bought the property in uh, 1816, you got the original deed to that property?
Oh, my.
The original. And uh, anyway, he's since, since he uh, since he had a, had a house to live in, well, I guess he needed a barn, worse than he needed a new house, so he burnt, built a barn in 1819. And that's the first worship services in Timberville was uh, was uh, held in John Ziegler's barn.
That brick barn?
Yeah, yeah. And of course, that's a little bit off the track. And we lost, we lost some other houses over the years that, and buildings that should still be here. The school opened in 1914 and that was torn down in 1981. And the big brick Wigan Thompson house that used to be beside the museum, that was built in 1837. And that was torn down in 1981, 1981 was a bad year. And then uh, the depot, of course, the first depot was built in 1868, but the one that we remember uh, was built in 1910, that was torn down in 1974. And then another building that should still be here was the old folks home. And that happens to sit down where Wits Market sits. And uh, that started, old folks home started in 1892 and it quit being an old folks home in 1941. And the building is actually torn down in 1957.
Okay.
And that's enough for tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Before I help you call the call, I'm gonna thank the council for the hard work on this budget. I know we, it's good to have healthy debate and um, if we all agreed, we'd all be going either the wrong direction or, or the right direction. But we had a healthy debate, um, that's what democracy or republic, however you wanna call this, is all about. Um, so, and again, the, the concerns that Debbie expressed are, are concerned. We have, we have to grow as a town and we stalled because of inflation. But the town has to grow, the town has to continue to expand because uh, to get, to get tax money, you add more people and you add more people and the house become more valuable, then it adds more taxes and stuff. So it's a concern, it's a challenge we're gonna have going forward without a doubt. But I thank the council for the hard work they put in and um, we all have our opinion and we all respect each other's opinion, I feel, and um, it's what, that's what this democracy is, is all about, so thanks for all your hard work, guys.
Can I piggyback off of that?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, at our last meeting, we talked about the Economic Development Authority.
Yes.
And about how the town gets $3,500 a year for economic development purposes.
Yeah.
Um, so, do we know how much total was in that account that could be used for those purposes at this point?
Probably about 18,000, I believe is what it is.
So.
It's 70, 18,000.
Is that something that the EDA has to get together and talk about? Or so that's not um, one of our committees that we need to gather and discuss?
But if you have suggestions, feel free to e- email me, I can take those suggestions to the EDA.
We had our first meeting at EDA and I can't remember what we discussed, but there was so much going on lately.
Well, that was for the bonds.
For the bonds, yeah.
That was maybe, but then you started talking about other areas of economic development and spending money.
So is there a place that like sets parameters of what that money can and cannot be used for?
Yes, it's all within the IDA, which is what the Industrial Development. Development Act, it is very broad. When it talks about economic development, there are a lot of things you can do with economic development dollars.
Okay, and this can be found online?
Oh, yeah.
Search online and it's specific to state Virginia?
It's in the code of Virginia. Yeah, it's Virginia code.
Okay.
Virginia, uh, yeah. Industrial Development Act. I'll send you the link for the, that section.
And has there been meetings in the past to determine any type of progress or any ideas or anything?
Well, the idea is, yeah, in, in the past, we, we, at one point, we had training seminars for local businesses on different things to do in their business, different ways, social marketing and so forth like that. And they helped pay for, if I remember right, helped pay for our first website when we got it going as a portion of that one first got into the website. And it also helped get the uh, Christmas village going too. So, there's, there's things, we just, with, when the COVID hit, we haven't been since before COVID until last month. But if you have ideas of training, um, one of the topics we had this last time was talking about what we could do more with the American Legion Park as far as um, with the food vendors and farmer market type stuff and things like that to bring more people into town and that kind of thing.
Okay.
Yeah, if you have, if you have ideas, please bring it to AC is, is, what are you, what's your name?
Treasurer slash secretary.
And I'm the.
You're the chair.
Chair slash mayor. So we've got a lot of slashes, so just talk to, talk to one of us.
So this can be used to help like market our town to bring in future businesses and things like that?
I'd say that's really what it's for. So if you have some idea, let us know. Okay, now we'll open up the public comment. If anybody in public wants to make a comment, come on up, you say your name, where you're, where you live. Be respectful, be nice, no cussing, that kind of thing. If you got anything to say, come on up. If you don't wanna say anything, that's fine too. Anybody, anybody at all. Any comment about anything?
Uh, I'm.
Come on up, ma'am.
Do I have to touch you?
Afraid so.
Oh, okay.
They want, they wanna see you on TV here.
Oh, okay, okay. Um, my name is Gretchen Hazard and I live at 124 North Main Street. Um, part of my property has the John Ziegler House on it. And one of the things that I did when I called um, AC was asked if we have engineers in town or we know of any engineers. And AC said, I can't recommend anybody to you. And is there any kind of a directory that we have of locals that might have an interest in making sure um, that they're serving the needs of our community um, as well as the needs that they have in their own employment? So it was just an idea that maybe a directory of some kind for, um, and part of the reason is because my perhaps new insurer suggested that I look at the Shenandoah Valley Builders Association. And they have a directory of all of the different people that have businesses related to particular kinds of things. So, I thought maybe it would be interesting for Timberville to have some form of a directory as well.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody? Going once, going twice?